So, thank you Senator Palina, take it away.
Thank you. The first person we'll be hearing from, and let me begin by saying I apologize for any mispronunciations of which there will be many, will be William Wilson from Underhill, followed by Mark Kaufman from VCIL, and then Francis Kayzac from Westford. So we'll begin with William Wilson.
One thing I didn't tell our witnesses is that we are streamed live on VPT, so watch your manners.
My name is William Wilson, I'm from Underhill, and I am for the bill. Death is rarely discussed, even though awareness of its inevitability marks our humanity. At the same time, its nature remains intensely private. This bill, in purpose, simply offers end-of-life choice for those terminally ill. It does not expand government's role so much as it allows individuals to make the most intimate decisions in consultation with their physician. Death has not made any easier so much as meaningful living more likely, not simply for those who choose to act, but for those who may never have or use that choice. Its presence alone is comforting. "It is written, 'To everything there is a season and a time to every purpose under heaven,' a time to be born and a time to die. In that most intimate season, the state, having safeguarded the common good, should respectfully withdraw and honor individual conscience and faith." Thank you very much.
I'm going to look to the back of the room, to our doorkeepers, could you hear that?
No.
No, okay. We're going to pause for a minute, I apologize while we get this settled so we can make sure you hear our next witness.
I think it's the VPT is interfering with the sound system in here.
I'm afraid there's the VPT, these may be causing me back a little. What's going to do to me a little?
Technology, isn't it a blessing?
We may have to go till five after seven to make it.
I'm leaving at quarter mark.
Okay.
But whatever you, Senator White will handle my position.
Yep.
She and I agree on this.
So we'll be hearing from Mark Kaufman, followed by Francis Kayzac from Westford, and then Maria Jacobit from South Burlington.
Good evening all, I'm Dr. Mark Kaufman, Vermont Center for Independent Living, Madam Chair, thank you Senators, thank you for hosting this. If I may, I will not sit on the table as it indicates for me right here. If I could leave these please, we had two people who sent in testimony who are not able to be here tonight, but they provided a written sense. At the Vermont Center for Independent Living, we have three very grave concerns.
Keep talking. Let's hold on a minute. They're working on it? I've got you.
I get five seconds back.
Can you do that?
I'm not sitting on the table, sorry.
Yes, with 200 copies distributed, we can make more. I haven't heard that. You mean they're feeding off each other? All right. Okay. Why don't you try again, Dr. Kaufman? Why don't you try again?
Senator Ashen's going to have to hold the microphone nonstop. I should get my sound engineer over here for you from the band. We have three major concerns, several minor ones, but the three top ones. One is the social policy. One of the things we've heard, especially out of Oregon, is that the end-of-life choices are not made because of pain, but they're made because of quality of life, of dignity, of I don't have full control of myself anymore. The people that we work with, the people we serve, have those conditions every day, year after year, and yet somehow they maintain a dignity of life. Are we now equating death and dignity with how you choose to live your life? The second is in the area of safeguards. We fully appreciate the additional safeguards that are written into this year's draft of the bill. We think you're making good steps and are grateful that you're concerned for the safety of the individuals in Vermont. What safeguards are enough? How many mistakes are acceptable? You're going to hear from some people over the next week who've been given a terminal diagnosis multiple times in their life. If at one of those times they choose to die, is that okay then? When it really wasn't a terminal diagnosis? Thank you very much. The final area is one that is very, very simple to us. What are the real choices? If I don't have any health care left, do I get to choose to not bankrupt my family because I'll just die? If I choose to die only to save my family some pain, have I made a reasoned choice or have I now been coerced from a systemic matter? Thank you very much.
Francis Kayzac from Westford, followed by Maria Jacobit from South Burlington, and then Richard Giralliman from Burlington.
Thank you for inviting us. My name is Franka Kayzac from Westford. I know what terminal illness is. I had to stop food and water for my wife at her request, she was putting on narcotic drip. The last year of her life, and we fought that cancer for 14 years, the last year of her life was hell, and she didn't have a choice which way to go. She was in a, she lost her strength, she was in a wheelchair, partial loss of vision, loss of body function, bedridden, frequent seizures, massive head pain, and that's what caused the narcotic drip. I support the individual's right to choose. And if I, I have only one thing to ask, I support those who want to choose not to, and I support those who want to use this as an other. I ask you, at the end of life, if it's a personal choice for you, why can't it be a personal choice for me? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Maria Jacobit from South Burlington, followed by Richard Giralliman, and then Erica Riel from Barry.
My name is Maria Jacobit, I live in South Burlington, and it is my understanding that the purpose of assisted physician suicide is to allow a person to make the instrumental and profound decision to end their own life. With the assistance of a physician, I think everyone can agree that a physician's aid to such a colossal undertaking is contrary to a doctor's oath. What kind of message are we sending to our families? The message that is being sent is that it's somehow justifiable to kill people if there are legal consent, if there's illegal consent and support for such an immense decision. This dignity you're talking about does not make sense to me at all. The word dignity means, just in case you don't, you didn't look it up in the dictionary, it means the condition of being worthy, a proper sense of pride and self-respect. Supporting this bill does not describe dignity at all. I am wholeheartedly against physician-assisted suicide, and I encourage our legislators to support any, I would even support myself, any bill where any family member that is willing to care for a dying parent by providing them with the proper educational and financial assistance, to do so on a full-time basis. I was able to care for my dying parents in my own home, and they died peacefully and with dignity. We need to unite our families by love and not encourage death with assistance. Thank you for listening.
Next is Richard Giralliman, followed by Erica, excuse me, Riel from Barry, and then Bill Mayers from Burlington.
My name is Richard Giralliman, I live in Burlington, and I'm here to ask you to pass this bill. I live in senior housing, and I'm 68-years-old. I have two graduate degrees, a law degree and a business, degree in business management. I think I should have a right to make my own decisions. This has far-reaching implications. Many men get prostate cancer. In Oregon, the majority of the people that make use of the bill have cancer. And as cancer metastasizes, it goes into the bones and it becomes very, very painful. So people faced with, for instance, a prostate cancer diagnosis, there's probabilities. Well, if you ignore it, there's something like a 75% chance it won't bother you. But if there's a 25% chance it will, so the doctor tells you, well, if you ignore it, maybe it'll go into bone cancer, and you'll have excruciating pain and die in a horrible situation. So you're forced into an operation, which maybe really you shouldn't have. But if, with this bill, it gives people security. Now, one of the previous speakers spoke about mistakes. Well, in, wherever these, this law is in effect in Oregon, it's in effect in Washington, and four countries in Europe, we're supposed to have a free country here. They have a lot more freedom in Holland and in Switzerland, and one of the previous speakers spoke about mistakes. Well, if you, you're much more likely to make a mistake if you have to travel to Switzerland and spend $12,000 in order to make effect of their law, whereas if you can wait here and see if it becomes unbearable, and if it doesn't, then you're not going to use the bill. But if it, if life becomes unbearable and you know you're going to die anyway, you should have the right to make the choice. And so I'm asking you to pass the bill, thank you.
Erica Riel from Barry, followed by Bill Mayers from Burlington, and then Tom Daham, I believe, from St. Albans. And again, if your name is called, feel free to come down and sit in one of the closer chairs so we can move along without wasting any time.
Good evening, my name is Erica Riel, I'm from Barry, Vermont. I have a rare genetic condition that affects my heart, and ever since I can remember, doctors have given me a terminal diagnosis, and telling me I haven't made, I will not make it to my next birthday. I'm 35 now, and recently, in fact September, I was given a terminal diagnosis by, not by one, but three doctors. And if I didn't have a surgery, I would die. The only thing that went rushing through my head was that I was tired. I was tired of living, I was tired of medications, I was tired of doctors, I just wanted to And I was tired of fighting, but my husband and my, my parents begged me one last time to see one more doctor. And he was in Boston, he was a specialist, and not only did he tell me that I would live, but I would live to be in my 80s, and that doctors in Vermont made mistakes. They gave me a mistaken diagnosis, and that I would live. And for me, getting a terminal diagnosis is as easy as getting a bottle of milk for everybody else. And how, and if it's easy for me to get a terminal diagnosis, how many other people are getting wrong diagnoses here? How many more people are going to, are dying? If this bill passes, how many more mistakes are going to be made? Thank you.
Bill Mayor, Mayers from Burlington, Tom Daham, I'm sure I'm not pronouncing that one right, from St. Albans, and then David Babbitt from Shelburne.
I'm Bill Mayers from Burlington. I speak in support of the Death with Dignity bill, which will help Vermonters and their physicians say how and when they will die. 20 years ago, my own terminally ill 83-year-old mother took her own life. For 20 years before that, she had told her family that when I cease to appreciate the gift of life and to be of service to others, I'm leaving on my terms, not yours, or the doctors, or God forbid, the lawyers. My mother was one tough woman. Because she lived life to the fullest, she said she was always ready to check out when that time came. My mother liked to say she didn't have much of a sense of humor, but in her self-deliverance, she delivered one memorable line. When I asked her how she was going to do the deed, she said she would put the pills in a bowl of ice cream. Haagen-Dazs, she said, not, I'm afraid, Ben &amp; Jerry's. Thank you very much.
You're Tom, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Followed by David Babbitt from Shelburne, and then Lynn Caulfield RN from Dummerston.
I'm Dr. Thomas Dowan, I'm a board-certified physician in private practice in St. Albans, Vermont. The American Medical Association is strongly opposed to physician-assisted suicide, and I stand with them in my opposition to this bill. There's a lot of reasons that it's tough to fit into two minutes, but let me just touch on a couple of things that I find intellectually dishonest and rather deceitful. The statutory construction, and I'll just read a part of it, says, "Action taken in accordance with this chapter shall not be considered suicide, assisted suicide, mercy, killing, or homicide under the law." Well, clearly, if somebody of sound mind and body ingests a lethal dose of medication and it ends up terminating their life, that in is the definition of suicide. I don't understand the need for our legislators to redefine words, to confuse people, to mislead people. This is suicide. Furthermore, the death certificate, I understand is, physicians are instructed to fill out the death certificate with the cause of death being the illness that the individual has, the diagnosis, whether it be cancer or whatever. Why the deceit? Why is the diagnosis of death not suicide or ingestion of a lethal dose of medication? That doesn't make any sense to me. What is the penalty for the physician who fills out the death certificate honestly and puts in lethal dose of, of medication ingested by the, by the individual? What is the penalty for honesty in this state?
David Babbitt, followed by Lynn Caulfield, and then Dick Walters from Shelburne.
All of us who favor the Death with Dignity Act affirm that every citizen is entitled to his own beliefs about the act. We reject the notion, however, that the minority of Vermonters opposed to DWD should prevent the majority of Vermonters who hold different beliefs from acting on their beliefs. And just a quote from a theologian, Daniel Lee, "One of the most frequent arguments made by those opposed to legalization, an argument with strong overtones of paternalism, holds that we always ought to intervene to prevent self-destructive behavior. But do we have either the right or the wisdom to decide what is best for other people in situations in which they are perfectly capable of making their own decisions?" Now, this is Daniel Lee speaking. "Those of us opposed to physician-assisted suicide would do well to focus our efforts in helping others discover the meaning and hope that are possible in life, even in the midst of suffering. We can accomplish far more by reaching out in a loving, caring manner to these, those experiencing great suffering, instead of sitting around moralizing about what they should and should not do, and threatening physicians with legal penalties if they act in ways at odds with values that we hold dear." Thank you.
Lynn Caulfield from Dummerston, followed by Dick Walters from Shelburne, and then Julia Roberts from Burlington.
Thank you. I am Lynn Caulfield, I am a registered nurse, I'm from Dummerston, Vermont, I'm a native Vermonter. It is a sad day in Vermont when our lawmakers are asking health care professionals to help human beings to die, rather than extending compassionate and respectful care to ease pain and suffering. Doctors and nurses and even legislators have pledged an oath to do no harm. The American Nurses Association says in its Code of Ethics that, quote, "The nurse shall not participate in assisted suicide. To expect a doctor to prescribe a lethal dose of barbiturates is the ultimate violation of ethics and conscience. Doctors and nurses have a high calling to be healers, comforters, and consolers, not to be the executioner." My husband Jack was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in December 2002. On two different occasions during his three-and-a-half-year battle with cancer, the doctors told him there was no hope, the cancer had spread. He was devastated by the news because he wanted to spend more time with his family, and our five children in particular. On both occasions, the doctors had been horribly mistaken. Medical prognosis is not an exact science, as we all know. Proponents of doctor-prescribed suicide are peddlers of fear. Studies in Oregon show the predominant fear of sufferers was not of pain, but rather of being a burden. What are we communicating to those we love? Doctor-prescribed suicide involves a doctor prescribing a lethal dose of barbiturates, 90 pills, end of doctor involvement. Patient has to take the pills home, no medical support there. In the Netherlands, there's an 18 to 25% failure rate, and then who do you call? Side effects besides failure to die include GI distress such as nausea and vomiting. Panicked family members have dialed 911 to have their loved ones revived. None of the dying patients I have cared for have been in excruciating pain. They have exited with grace and peace. It is a sacred moment to be present for someone when they breathe their last breath. We all need to be present for those we love. We have a rich privilege to care for the sick and dying and to extend compassionate and respectful care. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Written testimony goes to... Thank you very much.
Dick Walters, followed by Julia Roberts, followed by Elizabeth Steele.
I'm Dick Walters from Shelburne. Oregon has had the Death with Dignity law in place for 15 years. During this period, Oregon developed as a leader in palliative care and in hospice use. When it is passed in Vermont, the whole continuum of end-of-life care will improve. Better training of doctors, more Vermonters completing advanced directives, better palliative care, and physician-assisted dying as a final choice. That's what happened in Oregon after the law passed, folks. And that's what will happen in Vermont. Jenny and I started the Death with Dignity movement in Vermont 10 years ago. A big thanks to the Senate Health and Welfare Committee, all of you folks, for starting it on the path to passage this year, and to the Senate leadership for encouraging the process. Thank you so much.
Julia Roberts, Elizabeth Steele, and Dorothy Bolduc from St. Albans.
I'm Julia Roberts, and I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor. I've been in the field for nearly a decade, including counseling adolescents, adults, couples, and groups, and working with the homeless. As a mental health counselor, I encounter many individuals in their most hopeless and vulnerable moments. I've met with hundreds of men and women who have contemplated ending their lives. In the midst of their hopelessness and despair, clients frequently cling to one thing to stop them from ending their lives. That one thing is often a child, a grandchild, a friend, a religious belief, or a moral conviction. Death with dignity suggests that choosing to end one's life in certain circumstances is a legitimate option and even a basic human right. Law informs the conscience. When you remove suicide as a matter of conscience, you remove for some the one thing that would have prevented them from following through with their suicidal thoughts and plans. Removing deterrence to suicide can only lead to an increase in suicide. Teens and other mentally and emotionally vulnerable adults may not be fully developed in their ability to reason and make good choices. They may lack the ability to understand the difference between the choice a terminally ill person makes to end their life and their own seemingly hopeless situation, leading them to consider suicide. The legalization of death with dignity will not only affect the elderly and terminally ill who obtain lethal doses of medication to end their lives, it will also affect those who are at most risk for attempting suicide by whatever means they can. Death with dignity leads to a culture that promotes an individual's choice to end life as a human right, rather than a tragedy that should always be prevented. Thank you.
Elizabeth Steele, Dorothy Bolduc, followed by Melinda Moulton.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Steele, some people know me as Lisa. I'm from Shelburne, and I support the Death with Dignity bill. I see, I do see this as every individual's right to choose. I wish my father had had this option.
Dorothy Bolduc, Melinda Moulton, followed by Peter Anderson.
This bill is unconstitutional according to Article 17 of the Vermont Constitution. Laws are for all the people, not for only a part of the people. Proponents of the bill, in an effort to make it legal, have included such strict regulations, the bill discriminates against all kinds of people, example, people who can't swallow. I'm not suggesting the bill be broadened. I'm warning that this bill will lead to costly class-action suits brought by the proponents themselves. The bill claims nursing homes and residential care homes will not have to comply with this bill if it goes against their conscience. This is not true. Residents in nursing homes and residential care homes have the same rights as everybody else. A resident could take the 90 pills to kill themselves. Then the nursing home would face a thorough investigation of an untimely death. The proponents of the bill claim only a few would request physician-assisted suicide to have peace of mind, knowing that they could end their lives if it became unbearable, but only six to 10 people per year would actually use the 90-pill suicide. The proponents of the bill claim it's my life, my choice. Why then do the proponents of the bill want to involve the entire Vermont Legislature in their choice? A few people wanting peace of mind will cause thousands of people, like me, people without adequate health insurance, people with disabilities, to fear for their lives. The right to die will quickly become a duty to die. So far, we don't know how much Vermont's health care system will cost. We don't know what benefits will or will not be covered. Please don't let death be the first benefit. Thank you.
Melinda Moulton, followed by Peter Anderson, and then Richard Austin.
Good evening, my name is Melinda Moulton, and I live in Huntington. If I were diagnosed with a terminal illness and given a short time to live, and if this illness reduced my quality of life to a point where living was unbearable, I would choose to end my life. If I did this today, it would be considered suicide, and my family could not be present, or else they would be culpable. Do we as a people really have the right to deny another human being the legal means to end their life if they so choose? This bill gives us the right to make a most personal and profound decision whether to live or die during the last six months of a terminal illness. Ladies and gentlemen, our Vermont leaders possess the compassion and wisdom to adopt this bill and give those that want it the right to end their life, surrounded by those they love, in a legal, justified, honorable, and spiritual way without retribution. Thank you.
Peter Anderson, followed by Richard Austin, and then Edward Chase.
Good evening, my name's Peter Anderson from Jericho. What makes a young man in Connecticut kill his mother, school personnel, 20 defenseless children, and then turn the gun on himself and commit suicide? As a nation, we're wrestling with this question. I would suggest that part of the answer is to be found in the messages our culture sends about violence, death, and suicide, and whether or not human life is to be valued and protected. I do not doubt for a moment the good intentions of many of those advocating for end-of-life choices. The problem is the message that will be sent by legislation that legalizes suicide. The problem is the message that will be sent by legislation that legalizes suicide, regardless of the restrictions. Those who are weak elderly or handicapped feel at risk of being viewed by family and/or society as a burden to be eliminated. Although unintended, the consequences of a bill like the one under consideration will be very subtle at first, not so subtle down the road. Our attitudes about the weak elderly and infirm will begin to change, especially as our population ages, making these people feel economic pressure to benefit society or their families by ending their lives. If you doubt what I'm saying, consider Japan, a country with one-quarter of its population over sixty years of age, and in the next fifty years, that figure is expected to rise to forty percent. Japan's Minister of Finance just this month insulted millions of elderly people by suggesting that they are an unnecessary drain on the country's finances. He said, quote, "The problem won't be solved unless you let them hurry up and die," unquote. Hurry up and die. I always thought that the role of government is to protect life, not hasten or encourage death, and the role of physicians to do no harm, not write prescriptions which kill their patient. Does Vermont want to perpetuate this culture of death?
Richard Austin, followed by Edward Chase, and then Mary Van Vleek, I believe it says, from Charlotte.
Legislators and friends, I'm Dr. Richard Austin from Shelburne. I am a retired general surgeon. I come with three concerns as I listen to those opposed to this bill. The opposition says physicians utilizing this legislation would be violating the Hippocratic Oath. I learned from New England medical schools that the oath has not been used for many decades and has been replaced by the Declaration of Geneva. It was deemed inappropriate for modern medical practice since, under the Hippocratic Oath, there would be no chemotherapy and no use of the knife, thus limiting or outlawing surgery. Some say this bill is unnecessary, that doctors are currently secretly helping patients who request help dying. As a physician, I would be fearful of prosecution for prescribing this merciful medicine. This bill would preclude my fear and would allow the state to monitor its use and reduce the risk of euthanasia. The disability group opposes this law, fearing it will lead to a slippery slope and ultimate euthanasia. Disability alone would never qualify anyone for its use. Patients, as we know, must have a terminal illness six months' prognosis, and most importantly, must twice personally request the terminal medicine. Thank you very much.
Edward Chase, and Mary Van Vleek, if I got that pronounced that right, and then Carrie Handy.
Senators, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm Edward Chase from Westford, Vermont. Jesse Ventura said you can't legislate morality, and I absolutely agree with him. My children were told in elementary school many years ago that no one could tell them that stealing, murder, or anything else is wrong, but if what they do is against the law and they get caught, they'll be punished. Clearly, we're living in a post-modern society where many believe that everyone decides for themselves what is right or wrong. And as a result, what is wrong today may be right tomorrow, and that's where I think we find ourselves right now. We've never considered it acceptable to take human life, and now we're considering that taking human life may be acceptable under certain circumstances. And I have a couple of concerns with this. First of all, I think we need to recognize the division of responsibilities here on Earth. There is a time to be born, there is a time to die, and I believe it's God's job to decide when someone should pass away. And it's our job to love them, care for them, and make them comfortable until He decides to take them. Secondly, I'm very concerned about where this will lead. You can say it will only be limited to rational, terminally ill people who are able to make a quality decision to pursue suicide, but I think you already know that in Belgium, what we began as a decision for the person to make on their own has become a decision for those around them to make, so they've gone from suicide to euthanasia. As with any legislation you pass, there will be abuses you'll not be able to control, and as the boundaries will fade over time. Passing this legislation will be opening the door to more than you want to accomplish, and you won't be able to control it. Don't think that I'm coming to you as one accustomed with pain or suffering. Both my wife and I have suffered from cancer, surgery, medical care, and we've cared for six people in our family and close neighbors in the past ten years, and three of those passed away in our house. And hospice did just a wonderful time of taking care and managing any discomfort until the very end. So I ask you to defeat this legislation. Thank you.
Mary Van Vleek, followed by Carrie Handy, and then Ellen Veerik.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to talk with you. Again, my name is Mary Van Vleek, and I'm here to express my support for the Death with Dignity bill. I've known many people who haven't in this room, who've had devastating conditions due to cancer, starting with both my parents, who had to remain alive long past when they wanted to die. And watching them drift slowly away was excruciating. At the end of my mother's life with bone cancer, she had ten breaks fractures in her spine and was on such heavy medication that she really wasn't, didn't behave the way a normal person would. On one occasion, for example, she tried to eat her napkin. For myself, I do not want to have to face or anticipate a similar fate. Without this loving legislation, if I were to have a death sentence such as cancer or the beginning of Alzheimer's, I'd definitely look for a way out. There would, could always be a gun. I've never owned one. But I'd rather go in a more gentle fashion with loved ones around me and supporting me. I want to be in control of myself to the end and not die as a withered, agonized remnant of my former self. I understand that in Oregon, phew, thank you, only one in ten people wanting help in dying are unable to end their lives as they wish. Medical practitioners are helping, who help terminally ill people, are extremely careful in judging each case, and those who are ill must be the ones who ask, and they must be in control to the end, so there's little danger of this practice being abused. Those opposed to this legislation claim to have God on their side. I don't think God would object to this.
Thank you. Carrie Handy, Ellen Veerik, followed by Thomas Horigan.
My name's Carrie Handy, and I live in St. Albans. I'm currently privileged to be helping care for both my father-in-law and my mother, each of whom has recently received a terminal diagnosis. Each is being lovingly cared for at home without undue discomfort or pain. Both have chosen not to seek curative treatment, and they know their time here on Earth is limited. Neither would ever consider suicide as an option for shortening that time, nor would any of their children or grandchildren wish it. I've been told by some that these circumstances are unusual, that too many people at the end of life don't have the same resources and family support that they do, and for this reason, they should have the option of prescription death. Such sentiments underline the reason why we must never make physician-assisted suicide a legal option. The care that my family are receiving is what we should be striving for, for all people, and not spending time on legislation that will serve only to encourage the most vulnerable and disadvantaged to think they have no choice but suicide at the end of life. Underlying the pro-suicide rhetoric about choice is fear, fear of suffering, fear of being left alone, fear of the cost of care, and fear of being a burden. If this legislation is enacted, it will be fear, not choice, that will ultimately persuade many of our weakest and most vulnerable citizens that suicide is their only option. Proponents of assisted suicide say they merely want the option to control the circumstances of their death. They insist that this legislation will do nothing more than provide this choice for those who want it. The fact is, this choice already exists, and many have exercised it throughout history. We do not need a law in this state that will benefit no one and has the potential to harm many. Good legislation has no harmful unintended consequences, and this proposal does not meet that test.
Ellen Veerik, followed by Thomas Horigan, followed by Judy Murphy.
I am Ellen Veerik from Shaftesbury, Vermont, and my youngest daughter died three years ago of colon cancer. She was not fearful of anything. She was six feet tall on her bare feet and had red hair down to her fanny, and she'd been an RN in the Bennington Hospital since high school, and she died at fifty-three. I support this bill. She was discovered to have colon cancer when she went up to Hanover for something quite unconnected, and it was found to be very advanced, and they sent her down to Providence for a very new treatment. They opened her up to give her the treatment and found she was so full of tumors that they couldn't do it. It was too far advanced, and they had to just sew her back up. She was in terrible pain, and she tried very hard to, they let her go on working at the hospital in a sit-down job doing cardiac monitoring. She did that for almost a year, and it finally became too painful for her to do that. She was several weeks in great pain, and normal pain meds didn't even touch it. Finally, she became somewhat comatose because they had to keep upping the pain medicines. I was there sitting with her one day, and she suddenly sat up in bed when we thought she was out cold and said, "Why the hell aren't I dead yet?" And finally, a day or so after that, she woke up, she tried, she tried to come home to die, and it was just too painful, and she said, "Put me down, please put me down." She was a great horsewoman, and that's what you did to old horses, and she was not a weak woman. Thank you.
Thomas Horigan, followed by Judy Murphy, and then Guy Page.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for listening a moment. I'm Tom Horigan, retired surgeon from Franklin County's Fairfield and St. Albans area. Webster defines suicide as "an active instance of taking one's own life voluntarily and intentionally, self-murder. No exceptions or modifications are recognized concerning the victim's age, health status, or estimate of life expectancy. This definition appears accurate, precise, and appreciated by most adult Americans, most adult Vermonters particularly. I hope and trust, therefore, that our Vermont legislature will reject the proposal to legalize physician-assisted suicide, noting that it would be impossible to accurately monitor, witness, for example, the large number of individuals and organizations convicted of fraud, deceit, and theft. Predictions as to six months or less to live are notoriously inaccurate, especially as medical and surgical care continues to evolve and improve. The degree of pain noted by terminal cancer patients is greatly exaggerated, an exception being those with bone cancer for whom unlimited amounts of legal and effective anal jujitsu are readily available. The potential for abuse is huge. Grandma is wasting our inheritance. Grandmother, you always said I don't want to be a burden to anyone. It runs counter to our centuries-old rule: cure sometimes, contribute generally, comfort always, but harm never. In conjunction with the performance of very many major surgeries, never did a single patient request that I terminate him or her. We should continue to improve and utilize our excellent hospice-type care and further promote patient terminal care directives."
Thank you.
That's it. Sorry, couldn't complete it. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Murphy.
Big bad? Yes. Could I leave it? Oh, yes.
Yes, you may.
Yes, I will. I'm sorry, I thought you said read it, and I'd already been denied. I thought you were going to give me a second chance.
Judy Murphy, followed by Guy Page, and then Judy Niffen, I believe, from North Bennington.
Hi, thank you for holding this important hearing. I'm Judy Murphy from Bennington, and I strongly support the Death with Dignity bill. I was recently asked by a friend to be with her while she died. She was ninety-four, and her body was dying around her, and she made the courageous decision to go with it. She ended her life by starving herself. She had no food or water for eight days before finally dying. She should have had the choice of a death with dignity. Another friend in her eighties was diagnosed with stomach cancer. She'd had cancer before, she didn't want to go through the treatment again. She made the same decision to starve, and it took two weeks. My friend Millie Katz had pancreatic cancer and wanted to die. She called me over. She said, "Didn't we pass that bill?" I said, "No, it didn't pass." And she wanted to die, but she lingered several weeks longer. I want to speak up for patient choices. Not everyone would make that choice to die, but many, including myself, would have great comfort in knowing that that option is possible. I urge you to pass this important legislation. I also have testimony from Dr. Bob Block and Laura Block of Bennington. I'd like to leave with you. Thank you.
Next is Guy Page, followed by Judy Niffen, followed by Tom Isabelle.
Guy Page from Berry. Today, I speak only for myself and my family. About ten years ago, my son Tim was perhaps the most challenging teenager in the state's programs for severely emotionally and mentally disturbed children, the Gaffney School, the Baird School, Park Street in Rutland, Woodside, NFI, and more. I know this because the workers in each of these wonderful, worthy programs told me so. Tim was suicidal. We lived with the reports of how he threatened and sometimes acted on his impulses. He was also a bright child, able to make connections, and one night, after listening to testimony pro and con on assisted suicide, I asked him what he thought. His response shocked me. Shaking with anger and fear, he said, "What hypocrites! Every day, my teachers tell me killing myself is never an option, but here they're saying that suicide is okay." For his sake, I tried to explain that the bill wasn't about troubled teenagers. It didn't matter. As teenagers will do, he had concluded that adults have two sets of rules, one for kids, another for them. For a time, this mixed message confused him, threatening his commitment to survive. Fortunately, his family and teachers intervened. He survived and survives to this day. As for me, I will never believe the confident predictions that assisted suicide won't lead to a teen suicide, because I saw the fear in my son's eyes. I saw how the double standards shook him. Some laws have unintended consequences. I know you all would be horrified if somehow this bill contributed to a teen suicide, and I urge you to give the Tim Pages of today and tomorrow no reason, however unintended, to consider suicide. Thank you.
Judy Niffen, followed by Tom Isabelle, and then Ruth Hunter.
I'm Judy Niffen from North Bennington, and I'm testifying in favor of the bill. In nineteen eighty, my mother died from emphysema complications, ending ten years of physical deterioration and battling her own terror of suffocating. She had asked some for help to die peacefully, on gentler terms, and gotten sorry as response. When found unresponsive in bed one day... When found unresponsive in bed one day, Mom was rushed to the emergency room and mechanically resuscitated. Her response? She was furious. Today, medical technology can run roughshod over our own bodies' sense of when it's time to cede the struggle. We need to rebalance that shift in sensible and in compassionate ways. I ask you to pass the Death With Dignity bill for my mother and for many others who suffer terminal illness and are struggling close to death. Thank you.
Tom Isabelle, followed by Ruth Hunter, and then Eileen Haupt, I believe, from Jericho.
My name is Tom Isabelle. I'm from Barry, Vermont. I work full-time in the medical community. Some of the patients I've had the honor to serve have had terminal illnesses. Every situation is individual, and we must treat these valued individuals with dignity and respect always. But no situation is too great for the love and compassion that we can share with those we love and serve. They're not burdens to us, rather opportunities to share the goodness of our Creator's love and hope for eternity. One individual I know stood by his wife for three years during his wife's battle with cancer. He wrote, "I was blessed to have every moment I could with my wife to the end." There are people who do recover from hospice and go home. I prayed my wife would be one of them, but I would never have known if we had chosen the route this legislature is proposing. I made sure she was not in any pain in the very end. I feel this is where the medical community can best serve their patients. I encourage all Vermont political leaders here to consider and support the efforts of giving hope and valuing life by voting no to this doctor-prescribed suicide legislation. Thank you for listening.
Ruth Hunter, followed by -- I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, but Eileen, I think it's Haupt, Haupt from Jericho, and then John Hunter.
Anybody left in Jericho?
Ruth Hunter from Woodstock, and I am in favor of your passing Death With Dignity. I've seen and heard of beautiful deaths, peaceful deaths, and I've also heard of painful deaths that were hard, and I hope that I can be one that has a peaceful death. I've heard of about five people who took their own lives, and those were peaceful deaths. Two of those, one was a doctor herself, and one had a doctor in the family, and I don't suppose that I would have that chance. There are conditions which -- under which I think death would be difficult for me, and I would like the option for myself not to have to go through certain things. I fear Alzheimer's. I fear total paralysis. I fear terrible pain, and I fear being brain-dead, and those are some of the things that I would like not to have to experience. I don't know what I'm going to feel like when I get to the point where I'm dying. I might make that choice, and I might not make that choice, but I just want the ability to make that choice. I don't want to be helpless, and I don't want to be unknowing. I would like to have my family around me, and I would like to know what's happening. And so, I hope you pass the bill.
Thank you.
Eileen. Have I really mispronounced her name a lot?
Haupt.
Haupt. Sorry about that. Followed by --
I'm used to it.
John Hunter, and then Carolyn McMurray.
Okay. Eileen Haupt from Jericho, and I'm opposed to physician-assisted death legislation. Saving lives is the thread that runs through everything Americans do. We have helmet laws, seatbelt laws, building codes, all for the purpose of saving lives. We have the 911 system, emergency responders who rescue people anytime, anywhere, firefighters who run into burning buildings, even skyscrapers risking their own lives to save the lives of others. We have suicide prevention in schools and rush to intervene when anyone is suicidal. This legislation is a sea change from what it means to be American. It makes a mockery of all the lifesaving work that Americans do and always have done. People who support this bill say that they have a right to end their lives when the time is ready, but they don't have a right to make me as -- or us, as a state or a society, to be complicit in that decision. One previous witness told us of his mother, who took her own life when she was ready, that the -- you know, said his mother was tough, and this proves that we don't need this legislation. What really the supporters want is the blessing of the state. They want us, as a state and as a society, to say that this is okay, and they want our blessing, and that's the difference between, you know, obviously, this can be done, and I don't want any part of it. Another person spoke about freedom. Well, one of the countries in Europe, I can't remember if it's Holland or Belgium, that has gone down this road. Just recently, two 45-year-old twins, who were deaf, found out they were both going blind. They must have some disease that they both have, and they requested and were granted euthanasia. They were not terminally ill; they just didn't want to live that way. What happens when someone doesn't die in this experience? Will the response be to call 911, as we traditionally do, or will the new paradigm kick in and have somebody there to finish the job? Thank you.
John Hunter, followed by Carolyn McMurray, followed by Wolfter Snyder.
Thank you very much for this chance to speak. I am a Quaker who regards himself as a deeply religious person. I have a degree in theology and have another one in social ethics, and I feel very strongly that this option ought to be available to people to be assisted in helping ease their pain, even if it means finishing their life. I think it's very important that that option be available to people who are living a life, hardly living a life, I should say, and they should be able to make that choice, because the individual person is terribly important in all of this, and I believe it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Caroline McMurray, followed by Wolfter Snyder, followed by Gerald McMurray.
Hi. I'm Carolyn McMurray. I'm from Arlington. 22 years ago, I was present at my dying mother's hospice intake interview, when the nurse suddenly asked her if she would ever consider using the pain medication she'd be getting to end her life. My mother teared up and said, "I might." Instinctively, I said, "No, she won't. My sisters and I will take care of her. I'll keep her medication and use it only for pain." My mother looked so relieved. She lived three more months, and never once did she mention suicide. Taking care of my mother was the hardest thing I ever did, but I'm so glad I did it. This incident taught me a couple of things. One, no one needs suicide assistance. The hospice nurse asked that question because she knew anyone receiving prescription pain medications had the means to commit suicide. In fact, a pharmacist told my husband, "A bottle of over-the-counter pain pills is all you'd need." This kind of suicide is not violent. Nothing prevents the family from being with the patient. He could call loved ones together, say goodbye, ask them to stay with him while he slept, take an overdose of drugs without telling anybody, and die without involving a physician or implicating his family. And since suicide can be accomplished without telling anyone, I think we ought to view someone telling somebody as something that should trigger suicide prevention efforts. The look of relief on my mother's face when I promised to prevent her suicide by caring for her convinced me of that forever. Like most people, I want to be cared for when I'm dying. I would consider simply the existence of legal suicide a form of pressure, and that is not choice we should defeat this bill. We should not have this bill. Thank you.
Wolfter Snyder, followed by Gerald McMurray, and then Lisa Carlson.
Good evening. I'm Wolfter Snyder from Charlotte, Vermont, and I thank you for your time. As I approach the winter of my life, I may be faced with having to handle a debilitating or terminal medical condition. My personal choice is not to struggle with medical magic until my last breath, at great expense to our medical system and great physical and emotional effort by my family. I would rather not deplete my estate to my last breath, but rather have my estate support young life. So what choice of exit do I have? Well, currently, I have a driver's license, I have a Second Amendment, and six feet of rope, all legally available to me for an undignified and violent end to life. S-103 offers a dignified choice, preferred by me and most Vermonters. I support this choice, and I hope you will also. Thank you.
Gerald McMurray, then Lisa Carlson, then Arabella Hubbard.
My name -- my name is Gerald McMurray, and I'm from Arlington, Vermont, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify before my wonderful senator from Bennington County, Chairman of the Judiciary Committee. I oppose this bill very strongly for three reasons. First, physician-assisted suicide would legalize and sanction suicide in our state. From the dawn of civilization, societies have sought to keep people from killing themselves and have sought to keep people with suicidal urges from taking this final step. Passage of this bill would change our state and societal values that protects suicidal people from trying to kill themselves and that says that suicide is permissible in some circumstances. Secondly, approval of this bill would degrade the medical profession, changing it from a healing and comforting one to one that kills the inconveniently sick and dying. Third, the medical cost issue has a huge potential in pushing people to assisted suicide. Fearful of the great costs of medical care and worrying about health insurance coverage, Medicare, Medicaid, a terminally ill patient and their families will be pushed to the cheaper alternative of paying only $90 for pills rather than the thousands of dollars of medical care. What state, what federal government, what insurance company, in this era of fiscal austerity, will not push people to the cheaper alternative? $90 in pills versus thousands in Medicare? Members of the Senate, please defeat this bill. Thank you.
Next, we hear from Lisa Carlson, then Arabella Hubbard, and then Reverend Sister Lorian Siebel.
Lisa Carlson from Heinsburg. I'm wearing a blue sticker, but I wish it said "patient choice." I'm very much pro-choice. When I checked a couple of years ago, 25% of the suicides in Vermont were seniors over 60. Out of 30 suicides, 21 were gunshot. There surely needs to be a more gentle, kinder way to go. Two of those suicides were helium, which is very quick and painless, but helium is a little more difficult to obtain. There's a shortage these days. I don't know how many people remember that when Jacqueline Onassis died, John John said, "My mother died in her own time." Those people close to the family didn't have to guess at what that meant. I strongly believe that not only the rich and famous have a right to choice, we all do. I fully support this legislation. I'm very pro-choice.
Arabella Hubbard, followed by Reverend Sister Lorian, and then George Skivoni.
Hi. I'm Arabella Hubbard, and I live in Williston. I'm opposed to this legislation. Many dire physical situations have been described tonight, and we know, we all know of other dire physical situations. I want to change gear and, within the context of this discussion, simply say that there is a God in heaven who loves us all more than we can possibly imagine. The comfort we can receive from this fact in every situation is immeasurable. This loving, powerful, and tender Father is longing for a relationship with each of us. It is He that gives life and He who blesses life boundlessly. It is His, not ours, to end life. We all have different opinions about that, of course, and I believe that strongly. None of us knows what is in our future, even if we receive a fatal diagnosis, but whatever we face, including the wrenching situations with which many of us are acquainted, knowing the love of our great God makes everything more bearable, even joyful, including facing the end of this life. Thank you very much.
Reverend Sister Lorian Siebel, followed by George Skivoni, followed by Bob Yorich. Excuse me.
Good evening. That's better. My name is Reverend Sister Lorian Sieber. I am a nun and priest in the Episcopal Church. My home is Berlin, and I am a vicar of a small parish in Waitsfield. I believe that currently our society does not believe in the life to come, and that therefore, any pain or discomfort is better to endure than loss of life. I believe that advances in medical science have made possible the thwarting of God's will by keeping people alive when it was time for them to die. I believe that this is wrong. Today, a woman I help, who has lived in a nursing home for decades, called me and asked me what I was doing today. I was reluctant to tell her because I know people who are opposed to this bill think they speak on the behalf of people like her, but she pressed me, so I told her. "Tell them I am in favor of it," she said. Personally, I am happy in my current caterpillar life. I look forward with interest and some curiosity to the butterfly life of the future, but I approach with fear the crystal-less life in between. I do hope it will be short. I pray it will be short. Another name for that time is Limbo, and those of you who know your celestial geography know that Limbo lies on the outskirts of hell. I urge the approval of this bill. Thank you.
George Skivoni, followed by Bob, I think it's Yorich. I might pronounce it a little bit wrong.
Skivoni.
George Skivoni.
It means big slave.
I wasn't using my hands enough.
Big slave.
And then also, coming up, will be Laura Zink.
Well, thank you. My name's George Skivon from Shelburne, and I thank you for having this public hearing. It's a very important thing for all of us. 22 years ago, our own Visiting Nurses Association, one of the first, established one of the first, if not the first, respite house in the country, and the VNA continues as a national leader of end-of-life programs. The progress in palliative care has been astonishing over the past 22 years, and in particular in Vermont. Vermont has been a leader in combining life-sustaining care with end-of-life care. With the continuing good progress implementing palliative care, is there really a need for physician-assisted suicide? It seems physician-assisted suicide is driven by those who are upset at their loss of control of illness, dying and death. Sick people almost always want to live. People adjust to their situation. People adjust to their situations. People are remarkably resilient. With the progress being made with timely, high-quality access to caring compassionate palliative care, why would Vermont, one of the leading palliative care states, offer death? Thank you.
So Bob Yulrich, followed by Laura Zink, followed by Marnie Wood.
Good evening, I'm Bob Yulrich, I live in Charlotte, and I thank the committee for bringing this issue before the legislature in a timely fashion. Ten years ago, my interest focused on terminally ill patients who, without a death with dignity law, unnecessarily and prematurely killed themselves shortly after diagnosis. Many people have testified that a terminal diagnosis leads people to kill themselves quickly. The death with dignity experience shows counter to that, that those people fight on to live as long as they can enjoy life and only give up when there is no hope left. Under a death with dignity law, patients gain time, confidence, reassurance, comfort, and control. My earlier concerns are still important, but there is more. Namely, the positive impact which the Oregon death with dignity law has had upon the practice of medicine in that state. I salute hospice and the contributions of Vermont's hospice workers. Unfortunately, too few Vermonters ever enroll in hospice. If Vermont's experience were to follow Oregon's, passage of death with dignity should lead to increased hospice enrollment. Also, the positive experiences of Oregon's hospice workers tending death with dignity patients is well documented in the scientific literature. A myriad of positive outcomes is described in the New England Journal of Medicine. Passage of a death with dignity law can improve the lives of terminally ill patients. It can improve enrollment in hospice, and it can improve medical care for those patients. Thank you.
Laura Zink, followed by Marnie Wood, and then Donna Carlson.
Hi, I'm Laura Zink from Bennington. In 2009, our family was in this house honoring our son and others for saving lives. Our son, while on duty, had arrived at a horrible car accident, found the driver's legs pinned in the blazing car, with the man being cooked to death. Our son extracted the driver amid bursting flames. Today, I'm in this house, not honoring those who saved lives, but speaking against doctor-prescribed suicide. Promoting death as a treatment option asks doctors to destroy the very lives they pledged to care for under the guise of patient choice and control at the end of life. Different understandings of compassion, dignity of life, and pain management divide us and ignite us. The man our son pulled from that burning car suffered multiple injuries and life-threatening burns. After months in critical care, he managed to attend the awards ceremony here, wanting to meet the team who saved him. He couldn't remember the accident, though he was living with the scars. You see, life is worth living until life's last breath. There are always people to help us, no matter how much we think our lives are autonomous, independent, self-sufficient, or self-ruled. As the man in that burning car discovered, there was a team of people who saved him. In some mysterious way, we're all part of one another's lives. At the awards ceremony, our son said, "We made the decision right then and there to do something. It wasn't just one person helping, it was just everyone doing the right thing." I beg those currently in favor of doctor-prescribed suicide to do the right thing. Please don't throw gasoline on the fire of this proposed legislation, you could kill a life. Please vote no on doctor-prescribed death. Thank you.
Marnie Wood, followed by Donna Carlson, followed by John Frieden.
Good evening. My name is Marnie Wood, pardon me. I've been a resident of Vermont for thirty years. I live in Middlebury, and I'm a retired educator, and I hope this evening that I'm bringing a unique perspective on this particular proposed legislation. I believe in the right of choice, and I'm in favor of the proposed legislation regarding end-of-life choices. I've had personal experience with the death with dignity process as provided in the state of Oregon. My sister Nancy, a former resident of Vermont, was diagnosed with ALS, a terminal illness. I was present at my sister's death on April nineteenth, two thousand nine, in Portland, Oregon. I also was her caregiver and assisted her in the suffering, living through the suffering that was part of her decline. Sharing final moments with a loved one will be common among many of us here today, however, what was different for my sister was her ability to choose the way in which her life ended. She was an individual with a terminal illness, she was within six months of dying, she was a resident of the state of Oregon and therefore had the right to choose. I want you to know that hers was a beautiful death. She was with family and close friends on a spring day, filled with bright sunshine and love in abundance. Nancy's brain had not been affected by her disease, she was completely competent. Nancy chose to bring closure to the suffering and complete helplessness that she had endured. We were given caring support in each step of the process because of the competent care and guidance of the Compassion and Choice Society of Oregon. The process is specific, and many of you are familiar with it, and I know the committees will be very familiar with that. Nancy had courage, control, and comfort at her death. She was supported in her decision by her family and friends, and we were comforted knowing her journey of suffering was over. Thank you.
Donna Carlson, followed by John Frieden, and then Andrew, I think it's Selly, from Essex Junction, I'm not sure if I pronounced that one right.
Good evening, I'm Donna Carlson from Worcester, and decisions made during a critical health crisis often are clouded with emotion, exhaustion, and some level of sleeplessness and depression. I know from personal experience that this is true. It can seem that there is no hope, no solution, no escape from the long days, longer nights, bad news, and physical and emotional pain. If this law were in place at the time, my husband and I may have been tempted beyond our ability to resist, yet my family's story demonstrates that a bill like this, if available at the time, could have denied our family fourteen more years together. So that is why I am here today, to plead with you that you vote no on this legislation. My loving husband and father to our two children, his name is Rob, was Rob, while still in his mid-thirties, became critically ill suddenly one night out of the blue. Now, we were on a journey of sickness and pain. One particular time, the doctors could not figure out how to treat him properly, and they said there was nothing they could do to stop him from dying. He was so very weak. Things looked very hopeless. A person changes when experiencing pain constantly during times like these. Both Rob and I were very discouraged and depressed. At times, Rob and I both thought that we might save our beautiful children this ongoing pain. It is very difficult to view things properly and make good decisions when being in a state of pain and sickness. Rob rallied, and the next fourteen years, he worked and he loved his family. We might have considered an escape during our darkest times. If this bill was law and available, we would have maybe missed those years together. Thank you very much. So I just ask you to, as legislators, give and encourage people to have those choices, so they can have fourteen years together. Please vote no. Thank you.
John Frieden, Andrew Selly, followed by Debbie Ramsdale.
Good evening, Senator Ayer, Senator Sears, and members of the committee. My name is John Frieden, and I live in Middlebury. I am president of the American Civil Liberties Union of Vermont, and I thank you for giving me and us this opportunity. I hope each of you and every Vermonter has a living will to control how you are treated when you are ill. Yet the state of Vermont denies us the freedom to choose how much longer to live when we are terminally ill. And it further denies us the right to exercise our choice with the assistance of the only persons qualified to give us such help, our doctors. The American Civil Liberties Union of Vermont believes that such freedom is our constitutional right. It is not government's role to make medical or religious decisions for us. It is not government's role to deprive us of personal autonomy to determine our life's course. This is not to facilitate suicide, it is to assure freedom. It is to define what is medically legal, and it is to ensure our privacy. Continuing to criminalize such conduct creates an impossible choice for some dying Vermonters. It forces this unfortunate few to live with endless suffering or without dignity, on the one hand, or to plead with doctors, family, and untrained persons to risk prosecution in order to provide help. The ACLU supports the language of the current draft. Thank you.
Andrew Selly, followed by Debbie Ramsdale, and then Robert Orlick.
Dr. Andrew Selly, Essex Junction. Esteemed legislators and fellow Vermonters, many on both sides of this issue here today have given moving testimony, speaking eloquently about human suffering. The suffering is real, and we have to feel that and express sympathy. My concern is to protect the most vulnerable among us. In my counseling, and as I watched my own stepmother slip deeper and deeper into the pit of Alzheimer's, I've seen two powerful emotions rise up: fear and shame that increase vulnerability; fear that I might linger in pain; shame that I will become a hopeless burden to my family. Fear and shame combined can drive people to despair and even suicide. For thousands of years, Western civilization has stood for the fundamental sacredness and dignity of human life, providing hope and a check against despair. It's what the Hippocratic Oath is all about. PAS removes that check by sticking the suicide option right in the face of the most vulnerable. We are de facto telling them, "We love you, but just in case you don't want to face future difficulties or drain our inheritance, oops, I mean your savings, here's Plan B." Make no mistake about it, PAS is a slippery slope. The right to die will become the duty to die, and ultimately, the duty to kill. It will not ensure freedom, it will undermine it. We're not denying dignity and palliative care must be given to the suffering, but it can be done without undermining the foundation of human dignity that our society was built on. Thank you.
Debbie Ramsdale, followed by Robert Orlick, and then Miriam Adams.
My name is Debbie Ramsdale, I'm from Charlotte, and I thank you for having this hearing. The first time I came to a public hearing for death with dignity was in nineteen ninety-seven. I was one of two people who spoke in favor of this bill, and there were about fifty or sixty opposed. I'm glad to see this movement is growing. At the time I came here, my husband was in the hospital. He had just had surgery for serious cancer, for colon cancer. And over the next two and a half years, he tried all the treatments there were, but continued to deteriorate. Not too long before he died, he had a friend in Massachusetts that he called, and he said, "If I can't endure this, if I have to keep going through all these treatments and doing this, is there something that you can do to help me?" And his friend said, "Yes, he would provide the medicine that he needed." So my husband was a very strong man, but he just broke down because he was so relieved to have that as an option. So that's basically why I'm speaking tonight, because I just want to have that as an option for people. They may never use it, he never did, but it was a great relief to him. So I hope that you will pass this bill, and I hope that the people who have questions about it or concerns about it will be sure to read the bill itself. I think that will answer a lot of their questions. Thank you.
Robert Orlick, followed by Miriam Adams, and then Janine Young.
While we're getting settled, I just want to remind you, we will end at seven o'clock. I heard the roads are going to be dicey, so let's keep moving. Thank you.
This legislation will make physicians killers and nurses, social workers, pharmacists, and other healthcare workers accomplices. Legislators who pass this and the governor who signs it will be co-conspirators. My name is Robert Orlick, I'm a pharmacist from Randolph, Vermont, and I will not be such an accomplice. Physicians are poorly equipped to be killers. Their role in our society is to save lives and to use medications to cure and not to kill. There are no standards in place to ensure they can carry out this mission of a dignified, orderly, and successful dying. Is it good enough to just write a prescription, give it to the patient, tell them to go and take it and die? In prisons, executions are done under very controlled environments, and the job gets done. This law does not create that certainty. So many problems can and will happen. Drugs have many possible side effects. There are differing levels of sensitivity to drugs. While most will react as expected, some people will have unexpected, exaggerated, and unpredictable reactions. Some will go into comas, some will get tremendously sick and vomit, aspirate, and suffer. There will be failures, there will be botched attempts, last-minute changes of mind. People will suffer before they die. They will not die right away, or at all, from these drugs. Some other steps will need to be taken. All, including healthcare workers who are involved, will be impacted. What effects will this have? What stresses? Where will their guilt lead to them? Possible suicide themselves. We will never hear of these problems, though, due to no or poor reporting requirements. Conscious lacking insurance companies will love it, it's a cheap way to go in this day of ever-increasing medical cost. Many healthcare workers will quit, many will never enter the profession because of such legislation. This is bad public policy. And for those legislators who will vote for this legislation, how will you get the thoughts of bad outcomes in the middle of the night out of your mind as you struggle for sleep, realizing you've been a part of it? Thank you.
Miriam Adams, followed by Janine Young, and then Caroline Bates.
My name's Miriam Adams, I live in Heinsburg. I've lost three very close, very dear relatives to terminal cancer, followed by suicides. It was terribly desperate and alone. Their acts were desperate, they were lonely. They couldn't have anyone with them because that would implicate the other person. I asked my aunt if I could be with her, and she would not do that to me. What is particularly sad about the current situation is that it can force people to end their lives before it is really necessary. My aunt knew that she still had to be strong and capable to do what she needed to do. My aunt knew that she still had to be strong and capable to do what she needed to do. She had to have the courage and the strength. She couldn't risk waiting until the last minute, when she might not have the ability to do it. So ironically, the lack of assistance from a doctor actually encourages suicide and an earlier date than might really be desired. We need a Death with Dignity law to allow people to live longer, as long as they wish, safe in the knowledge that there will be help for them to die if the pain of existence becomes unbearable. She was successful in her suicide; my uncle was not. It was botched. It was worse. He then had to starve himself to death. My grandfather's suicide was not pretty either. People should have an out. They need this bill. Please pass it. Thank you.
Janine, sorry, Janine Young, Caroline Bates, and then John Sullivan.
Honorable committee members, thank you. I'm Janine Young from Craftsbury Common. I'm here to request that you do not pass the so-called Death with Dignity or End of Life Choices legislation. A better name for this is Physician-Assisted Suicide. While doctors can predict when a person will die, they can never accurately determine when a person will die. I know this for a fact. My brother-in-law lived about a year longer than doctors predicted. A more poignant example is my father, who lived twenty years longer than the doctors predicted. Doctors told my father he would not live through the winter of 1962 to 63, so my eldest sister moved her wedding date up from June of 63 to December of 62, so he could walk at least one of his six daughters down the aisle. He not only walked her down the aisle, he walked all six of his daughters down the aisle and attended the weddings of two of his three sons. In 1978, when my husband's job was taking us to California, I said goodbye to my father in intensive care at the hospital in Burlington. I thought I would never see him alive again. The doctors said he would never go home again. He did, and I did see him again before he died. My father died in November of 1982, living long enough for sixteen of his twenty grandchildren to be born and long enough for his first granddaughter's wedding. We were still in California, so he never met my eight-week-old son, but he had heard his unborn heartbeat and had seen pictures of him. What if this law had been passed before then? Would he have missed all these events? Would he have felt a duty to ask for death? We will never know, but we can predict that doctors will make more mistakes in predicting death. They are not all-knowing. We can predict if this bill passes, it will start a slippery slope of patients being made to feel it is their duty to ask for death. We know there needs to be better pain management and depression management deals are possible if doctors just listen to their patients and families. I beg you to stop this so-called Death with Dignity bill.
Caroline Bates, followed by John Sullivan, and then Forrest McGregor.
I love that. Do not sit on the table. Anyway, I want to thank all of you very, very much for all of the incredible time you're taking to listen to everyone talk and to be able to give their comments. I mean, just thank you. I am Caroline Bates. I've been a resident of Vermont for over forty years. I live in Burlington. I have my own business for forty years, too. Is this too close? If Death with Dignity was around in 1973, my family and I would have been allowed to be with my brother, who had been suffering for years and years with a hopeless disease for which there was no medicine to stop his pain, no cure, and only more pain or more loss of the quality of his life. He asked several times to have help to die, but there was none to give him. One morning, my parents walked into his bedroom and found him hanging from his closet door, alone and dead. Wouldn't it have been so much more loving to have had Death with Dignity then and allow all of us to have been with my brother and say a peaceful goodbye? I am a strong supporter of having patient choice and dying with dignity. I want to have this choice if my quality of life is zero and no hope and pain uncontrolled. I ask that our legislatures pass the Death with Dignity bill as fast as possible. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, the back is what I was going to say.
John Sullivan, followed by Forrest McGregor, and then Pete Gomir, I believe, from St. John'sbury.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I am opposed to basically Death with Dignity. I am an absolutist, and, you know, the one thing, a gentleman before us said that he believed that a majority of the Vermonters agreed with this bill. The only way you're going to know that is if you put it out to a public vote, because I disagree. I'm a Bible-believing Christian, and the Bible does say, "No man knows the hour of the day." And so that gives value, even theologian that was quoted, Mr. Lee, gave value to every one of our breasts that God, the Creator, gave us. And yet, you want, you know, if a person wants to take his own life, that's because he doesn't see the value of God's creation, even in himself and in his very breath. Death serves a purpose, not only to the dying, but also to the living. My death, regardless of how it is, you know, to touch a nerve. A friend, a very good friend of ours, Greg Clark, did he know that he was going to die that day? No, and he didn't have a choice. And so neither do we have a choice to determine, especially from your perspective. If you vote this bill on to move on to a vote, you become an enabler, as I agree with what Bob Erlich said. You become enablers, and how will you deal with your conscience? You know, we already have. There's too many aspects of this bill that you can discuss from a moral and a spiritual perspective and reject it. Thank you.
Forrest McGregor. Peter Gomir, I hope I pronounced that one right, from St. John'sbury, and then Jim Harris.
These are my written comments. I'm Forrest McGregor from Randolph, Vermont. I wanted to, first of all, thank the opponents of Death with Dignity. You are all good people, and I love you. I unfortunately am very much pro-choice in this matter. When I was eleven years old in 1965, I moved across the street from a woman I would marry nine years later. After twenty-four years of marriage, she was diagnosed with colon cancer, which had metastasized through her lungs, and this beautiful creature with the voice of an angel's lungs were eighty-five percent involved. They told her she only had six months to live. The very first thing that she did was to ask her physician to prescribe a lethal dose of narcotics, which he was brave enough to do. What I told her that instant was, "Sweetie, this is your show. From now on, it's what you want, when you want it, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, until you don't need it anymore. I don't have a cent that you can't have; I don't have a minute that you can't have, and I will do anything that I can to give you an extra second on the planet." And for the next several months, I lived every word of that. The day that she decided to take those pills, I had made extraordinary arrangements to get her her first radiation treatment, and at that point, she decided she didn't want to do it anymore, and that night took the pills and died. I was with her. We were both criminals. It was illegal in North Carolina at the time. I can't tell you how difficult that was to get over and how many years it's taken me now, fifteen years, to come to terms with this. But love is doing what I did, which was risking myself and to do what I committed to do to the woman that I loved. And I hope that other people can be spared the feeling of criminality that I had. Please, please pass this law. It's essential. Thank you.
Peter Gomir, followed by Jim Harris, and then Clara Shop.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to dispense with some myths that's around this whole issue. First is the myth of intractable pain. Physician after physician after physician that I've spoken with, MDP/HD combinations tell me it is entirely possible to control all pain through either opiates and/or sedation or a combination of the two. What we really need is excellent hospice and palliative care, not suicide. Second, the myth that the opposition to assisted suicide comes only from religious zealots. In fact, numerous medical, nursing, pharmacy, hospice, mental health, and bioethics professionals oppose it because it violates the professional code of ethics, or the code of professional ethics, of their particular professions. It's also ripe for abuse, which I'll show you in a moment. It's also opposed by members of the disabilities communities for those same reasons. Third, we want to assume that everybody's motives are pure. And unfortunately, as a bioethicist and an ethics committee member, I've encountered family members for whom this was not true. They wanted physicians to terminate prematurely such common medications as antihypertensives and diabetes medications in hope that their loved one would have a stroke or go into a diabetic crisis and just die. In fact, one member of the family sat across from me, one-on-one, and said, "Look, I want him dead." Thank you.
Jim Harris.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Followed by Clara Shop, and then Betty Chase, sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jim Harris from Fairleigh, and I'm here in complete and total support of this bill, and I think I support all the reasons that everybody has spoken in favor of it. Not that the other sides don't have some real concerns, but I think I'm pretty impressed with the people's thought and their conscience that's involved with this. I'm also here to speak for my mom, who suffered terribly for fifteen years. The last year of it was beyond words, and I can't tell you how many times she begged me and asked me and pleaded to help her find a way out of this mess. And what she was asking for was help to terminate her life, for which I had no possibility of doing without going to jail. And for all of that reason and what everybody else has said, I totally support this, and I'd like to have the option for myself, should I be in such a mess as my mom was, with breast cancer that just spread, and bone cancer and the whole bit. We wouldn't treat a dog the way my mom was. And hospice did what they could, but believe me, it left a lot to be desired, and if I'd had the ability, I'd have helped her. Thank you.
Betty Chase, followed by Clara Shop, and then Sarah Chase.
Hello, I'm Clara Shoppe. I'm sixty, well, I'll be sixty-six years old in March. Thank God. When I was forty-two, I was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. I was staged at stage four, and I was told that I had less than a year to live. I also had an eight-year-old daughter, a six-year-old daughter, and a three-year-old son. I was devastated. My husband worked in a paper mill. We had halfway decent insurance, but the insurance wasn't going to be worth much, but I was going to be dead anyway. We searched to find some alternatives. Oh, I should say that eight years before I had that diagnosis, I had a little lump in my neck, and I had gone to my doctor, and my doctor had said, "Don't worry about it. That's just a little cyst. It'll go away." It did finally go away while I was getting treated for cancer. It was the first thing that went away. And the doctors then told me that at that time, that was non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, and if the doctor had staged me, I probably would have been cured, because it was stage one then. But at any rate, we found experimental treatments. I went through those treatments. It was painful. The worst part was having my neighbors ask me, not in the presence of my husband, but in the presence of my children, what was this costing us? What was it costing the children, the kind of life we had to live in order to pay the bills? I felt the guilt of having to explain to my children why we were spending so much money to keep me alive. Death with Dignity didn't exist then. I hope it doesn't exist in the future. Thank you.
We're going to hear from Betty Chase next, and then, excuse me, I skipped over a name, so we'll hear from Betty Chase next, and then Eleanor Von Trapp Campbell, and then Sarah Chase, and then we're going to be pretty close to running out of, being out of time. We'll see where we get from there.
Hi, my name is Betty Chase, and I'm a full-time EMT and a volunteer firefighter. I'm here on behalf of my mom. In 2003, she became a huge proponent of the Death with Dignity bill. At that time, she worked full-time, was a very active Grammy, walking an average of six miles every couple of days. In the fall of 2006, she started walking with a limp. By the summer of 2007, she had been diagnosed with ALS. By the summer of 2008, mom was using a power scooter to get around. She was starting to lose strength in her arms and was often choking on her food. It was her worst nightmare. In September 2008, my mom had saved up her pain and sleeping pills, and by herself, alone in her apartment, she took enough with alcohol to end her life. She was sixty-four years old. She left letters apologizing to her friends and family for doing what she did. She had been worried about what people would think. Later, we heard from so many people that they were proud of how strong she had been and to choose what she had done. I just wish that no one else has to feel as alone as she did with the choice that she made. And she felt that people would think badly of her for the choice, but nobody I spoke to did. They were all very proud of how strong she was. Thank you.
Eleanor Von Trapp Campbell. Is she still here?
No, she's coming.
And then she'll be followed by Sarah Chase and you, Campbell, if we have time.
So here I am. What I'm going to say has everything to do with what's been said, but I don't have any of your experiences who has gone through all these hardships. When President Reagan said, "We are one nation under God. Leave out God, and we are one nation under." And thanks to our independent spirits, thanks to the ACLU, who have shown God the door and told him to leave the public schools, the courthouses, wherever they could get their hands in, they tried to throw God out, and we sat by and permitted them. And now we are one nation under because we have lost our conscience. And without God, a conscience is almost not possible, if you know what I mean. We have to come back to God. Let Him, He loves us so much. Okay. He loves us, and He wants to be our heavenly Father. And all the people who are so desperate with the end of life, He is there at His end of our life, and He will make it possible. So don't take away this chance of letting God be God, and please, don't. So don't take away this chance of letting God be God, and please, don't think that you are God.
Thank you.
Neither should our governor think he's God.
Sarah Chase. And then you, Campbell. And then Judy Harris Otterith.
Hi, my name is Sarah Chase. I'm 14 years old, and I support the Death With Dignity Act. This is one of the letters that my Grammy left before she ended her battle with ALS. "God gave me way more than I could handle this time. I love my family, but cannot spend much more time dragging myself around. You don't realize how hard it is to do the simplest things like going to the bathroom and getting out of bed. Please don't judge me. You can't imagine what it's like. My back is starting to wear out. All the help in the world can't give my dignity back. I could keep a bright outlook for a while, just because I didn't think about it. You'll never know how much I've enjoyed the scooter. It's been a godsend. But I've progressed too fast. Don't think for one minute I'm taking the easy way out. This is by far the hardest thing I've ever done. I love you all. Mom, Doris, Sister, and Grandmother." Thank you.
You, Campbell.
Thank you. I'm Hugh Campbell from Whitefield, and I'm so glad that we've been here. We've learned so much from so many different points of view. It's been very, very helpful. But I can see so many people looking for something to hang on to, and I think for, what has it been, 3,000 years? We've had the Ten Commandments. Thou shalt not kill. I don't know how you interpret that any other way than saying, "That's not what God wants us to do." He's created the most incredible body for all of us. Some have malfunctions and so forth, but it's just such an, or an amazing work of art He's created for all of us. And then to think that we're going to say, "Well, that's only one of the Ten Commandments." Excuse me? No, it isn't. It is a principle of our lives that we've had for so many thousands of years. I just want to encourage anyone who is in doubt as to where to turn, don't forget the Ten Commandments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Judy Harris Otterith. I grew up here in Montpelier. My playground were the Capitol steps, and have always believed that the statehouse doors were open, as we see tonight, and it's really a privilege to always be able to walk through them and know we, our voices are heard. I'm very pro-choice. My trip through life has took me from Montpelier into Burlington, where I graduated from Burlington High School in 1959, and went on to a pre-med medical technology program in Boston. I graduated 50 years ago, in 1963. I was recruited for my first job by Rockefeller University in New York City in March of 1963, and from there, I worked in medical research labs in Mount Sinai Hospital and moved on to New York Hospital in the newly-formed Cornell Medical College Department of Neurology. The next eight years, I was privileged to work with two world-renowned neurologists and who became very famous for their work in coma, establishing biochemical baselines to define brain dead and other groundbreaking end-of-life studies. Within those years, I encountered now-famous patients, Karen Ann Quinlan, Nancy Jobes, and helped prepare expert witness testimony. I also was involved in the very first liver transplants. This was my professional life. At the same time, I've had real-life experiences within my own family and end of death, and my feeling is, I feel everybody deserves a choice. This is what my lifetime experiences showed me. The 24-year-old woman who received the first liver transplant
Thank you very much.
was alert, awake, intelligent, informed, suffering, but able to make her own choices. Hopefully, we should all be able to do that.
Do you want to leave that so we can...
I want to thank you all very much for joining us this evening, and I want to thank you for the respectful way in which both sides were heard tonight. I wish we had time to hear from everyone, but please, if you want to, send in your remarks, either to Senator Ayer and myself, or any member of the Senate. But we will have several hearings over the next two weeks that are open to the public. Just look on the legislative website. Thank you again.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.